All right, there we go.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
The general's money, five hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty cents. The sewer general blood, one hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. The municipal court fund, sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Corrections fund, two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents. Cash bond, sixteen, six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. Judicial court fund, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. The four and five cent gas fund, eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. The seven cent gas fund, ten thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Rebuild Alabama, forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Capital savings, thirty-five thousand eighty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Sewer capital, eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. CD GD grants fund, fifty dollars and two cents. American Rescue Plan Act, fifteen thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-five cents. The state will fund, seventy thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. For a grand total of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
The gentleman in the back with mask on, sir, do you have anything?
No, sir, no, sir.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero five, residential sewer rates. Have a motion to consider, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero five. Have a motion, clear, have a second, second wish done, all in favor. Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero six, building permit rates.
Bureau of State, it amends twenty dash.
Have a motion to consider, clear, have a second.
Terry.
Terry. All in favor. All right, have a motion to adopt twenty-two dash zero zero six. Have a motion to adopt, change, have a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor. Twenty-two dash zero zero seven, is updating the portion of the claim review fees. Motion to consider twenty-two zero zero seven. Have a motion to consider, Scott, have a second.
Second.
Second for Tim, all in favor. Have a motion to adopt twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Motion, Terry.
Yes.
Have a second.
Second.
Second for Tim, all in favor. All right, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero eight, de-annexation of CRA property. We're doing two seven.
Because they're owned by two separate individuals, they have to be in separate businesses.
All right, have a motion to consider, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero eight. Have a motion, clear, have a second.
Second.
Second for Tim, all in favor.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the eyes. Good.
Motion to adopt, ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero eight. Have a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
All right, have a motion, have a second. Second, clear, all in favor. All right, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero nine, another de-annexation of an address. Motion to consider twenty-two zero zero nine. Have a motion to consider, Scott, have a second.
Second.
Second for Tim, all in favor. Have a motion to adopt, ordinance twenty-two dash zero zero eight. Have a motion, clear, have a second.
Second.
Second for Tim, all in favor. We've got the resolution here for revolving loan credit. It's been brought before the council another time. This is a setup, this is an emergency situation. We need to borrow some money right away. We've got access to, access to five hundred thousand. Right, plus floating permanent three point two five. Just an emergency needed, needed, find something, we want to do a, a guy in there as well. We'll have to go up by, wait, somebody who wants to get approved.
At higher rates, but this is a great rate compared to.
One is, Chris, our whole office, building, sewer plan. We're going to have to build financial packages with all kinds of projects. And you, if you're going to look at a five hundred thousand dollar loan you have, maybe against us. And honestly, probably a few nights, if I talk, like three, six, five is, three, two, five is kind of average. If you're actually putting, that's a lot of credit, if you're actually buying something, which you have to look at a rate. So, in one turn, so can we really put ourselves in a position that hurt us? We're on our six, seven million dollars here, very sad. Well, I guess the question is, I didn't think, is this does have to revolving on credit to go against our credit. Well, anything, how much more on the money, credit cards, anything, that's your overall debt ratio? How much money you can be on, if you can give them, what amount of different. Just like, just any car, house, anything, basic financial bank, you got to turn in. If you got zero balance. You have, yes, I have forty-five thousand on my credit on my business. And if I go over money, that comes against me. And that's why, that's every credit card you have, all the dollars is, that's, that's how much money they can be out, you can give them, how much, how much, okay? Very cool.
Well, we had a great man, although, had a couple of businesses. Like the last three years, we didn't have to use it, so we were, so we're not looking out for it. But this year, we'll have to, to get off hand, because we go through all sorts here. For the season, so, I really like it, a lot of times, I said this, that, or the opposite. I'm going to go back, I'm going to get some credit on that. So, if, if we have canceled it, and had to buy it, say it back up, a lot of, and type, type work. I don't know, this is a little rare, here, on civilized, figured, where it does.
Yeah, I see that, I see that you said, I just, right now, I'm worried about, half a million dollars, what we're on, on our record, our account. And if, for whatever reason, if what this is written, it was like, there's nothing against anybody to, it's an emergency need. And all of a sudden, they go put three hundred thousand dollars on, right in the middle, while we're trying to get a bank, well, they're going to take a hard look at us. I mean, it's. I don't think any money would be spent against us, as far as cancel. Well, that's, again, that's not how it's written, so, no. And. It's, you know, that's, that much money, you go out to cancel, it's a problem. But again, again, same thing, I mean, any good financial, if you, if you pawn on mortgage right now, last thing, you just go buy a car, take out credit cards. Even a store car, if you don't do that, that, that can't get you. We're fixing tomorrow, a ton. I personally think there'd be a little bit more investigation of that, what's impacted big on us. I can see the benefit, I understand, I do the same thing myself, Larry does the same thing. Scott probably has something slumbered on his, he's got, I don't know. But that's just, that's, it's business, I get it. I'm worried right now, with everything else we're trying to do, with the smartest. So, everybody okay with tightening us till we find out, a little more about? Okay. All right, hiring a public works employee, Chris.
Uh, me and Mr. Mann and Mayor interviewed a couple of gentlemen, um, both qualified, heavily to do the job. And I've decided on someone to hire, so this is just asking permission to go forward with the hiring. It's everything that we had already agreed on last month, when we posted the, the job posting. It's just, it's y'all's permission to go forward. I'm not, waiting until this was approved.
So, we have a motion to pass resolution twenty-two dash zero zero. Have a motion, a second, by Scott, first by Tim, all in favor. All right, the last item on the agenda is, anybody want to go to Tuscaloosa? What do you mean?
This is for the, uh, the Leaks Conference Convention that they have every year. And they want a delegate, if Mayor Hampton, he has to assign delegates. Uh, James and Terry did this last year, when it was held in Huntsville. But it's being held in Tuscaloosa this year. Uh, the clerk cannot do it, he must be an elected official. We can also mail in our votes, if y'all don't want to go. I was going to go, if Mayor wanted to, for informational purposes. It's just basically bring, if y'all want to send them to be the delegate, pay for their travel.
Well, you might be worth a dollar, and I have a chance.
Well, I guess, I guess I get travels. Am I getting those for DMs without cheap burger, or, it's going to be critical?
Talk about costs.
Well, I'd be lucky to get it, obviously, typical governor.
No, you can't say it, the castle or anything.
I was going to say, typical governor for DM, I'm going to be staying at some base house, and so, and I'm likely going to get seventy percent of what they're upcoming, I'm going to get today, so, you know, I thought I won't get that.
So, we're going to send Jack, and he'll get that, okay?
So, we'll go get the big one, employees, continue, you got it?
Things good.
Randy, you got it?
It's just a bit busy. I've closed, last, uh, for January, I closed forty cases. I entered fifty-nine cases. Nineteen cases was found guilty. Um, we dismissed twelve cases. And, um, received, in, um, court cost and fines, eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So, Steve, tell us about your whole.
Oh, I've got, got all the stuff stored, I've got racks, all decorations, all signing stuff is up. I've showed you the pictures the other day, I think it's organized pretty neat. The spray truck can go in there, it's time it, since that accidentally happened to be four foot wider, it made it a whole lot better. It's going to be a whole lot better for getting that truck in and out of there.
You're going to jurify all of that, right?
Did you figure like to come? But, it looks like Christmas threw up in the back of that building, is what it looks like. But everything is, everything is in its place, and so, you know, you want any decorations, or wherever you want, you can just go right to it.
Is the fire hall size coming up?
Yes, except for a couple of things, it's going to be, go on the new signs, and Tony's captain's chair, I got it, I got a rack for it over there. But it's, it's safe. Plenty of room for fire trucks.
We just got one chat, I was, we didn't discuss whether we're going to put it out or not, or we're going to do it. I didn't know whether rush, you know, years, I thought they're doing a lot, so, maybe we were still in the transitional period, I didn't know. It's really, really good, though.
Well, thank you.
The building is nice.
Thank you.
Made that whole place look better.
And that said, I think the town, we get the concrete board in those other two bays, get the tank moved up, where the officers can just pull up and fill up without having to back in. It'll be really nice. Well, they can, they can back in there if they want to, if it's raining, they can back in the other side, so the truck gets parked in there. If we need to cover, I can build them a cover.
No, uh, we'll have to go back and review the plan at one time, or one of the diesel tank, gas tank, I believe, we both said, back, I think you can kind of pull in undercover. And then the two explosion parts were just the truck, and one's the parade truck, and one's the other truck that we don't have right now.
All right, I went to move the parade truck already, but it was full of North Pole stuff.
No, I, I just.
But on the, on the tanks, in order to use that one bay, we had talked about putting it up close enough, but set back far enough that they could pull up, step out of the vehicle undercover. Vehicle still be outside, but they could stand undercover while they're fuel.
Okay, just curious, I'm not sure what to let it tell, the plan eventually put a diesel tank back there. So that was the plan, to have all our tanks under, under ground. Looks really good, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim, you got anything?
No, sir.
Shannon, you got anything, sir?
Not right now, except for the public works truck, and all that is at the mechanic.
Jeeves, you got anything?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, last month, we had, fairly slow month, had two hundred and twenty-seven calls for service, three arrests, eighty-seven traffic stops. Three accidents, fifty-one, uh, traffic citations, thirty-seven written warnings. Uh, also, we picked up the, the new truck finally, after a year of being ordered. Uh, it should be rea-, uh, ready to throw into next week. Uh, also, we filled the spot, uh, the gentleman named, uh, Jason, uh, Barker, for the, uh, police officer. Uh, he's from Colorado, actually, and they've moved down here, uh, so, he starts tomorrow.
He has to go to the academy?
Yes, he's got to go to the academy, because Color-, he hadn't been employed in Colorado for the Alabama, meet Alabama requirements long enough, for it to transfer over.
Mr. Reese, you got anything?
Uh, you have a copy of the budget in there, this, as it stands right now, y'all can look over that, call me if you have any questions. Lori, you included in there the building permits?
Right, I included a, the building permit spreadsheet, or a portion of it, my, my spreadsheet's a little more detailed than what I've put here. But it shows the permits, the residential, um, home, new homes being built so far in twenty twenty-two. And it shows the permit cost at the ten cents per square foot, which is what we've currently been at now. And then, if you look at the last column, it'll show the seventeen cents per square foot, an increase, you know, just to see what it would have been, had we, had it been that. But, um, the estimated value of homes going up right now is over six million dollars, so, we've got a lot of.
And that's just what's been applied for so far?
This is just what's been applied for to date.
And I did check with Jake, and he responded while we were in here, that this seventeen cents per square foot can be applied to any home, including Richmond, and any of those others, uh, that has not purchased the building permit thus far. So, we are not locked in with Richmond, or anyone else, at the ten cent. We can move on back up to the seventeen cent, starting tomorrow, right? Yep.
All right, Lori, you got anything? I don't know this guy besides.
A pleasure to meet you, Sam.
Yeah.
Two things, real quick, the one, um, matter related baseball, we've checked all our boxes, I spoke earlier. Uh, other individual has reached out to council, and has started the process of creating the entity that has signatory authority for us to enter into an agreement with. So, um, you know, we're waiting on them to do what would put them in a position to enter into an agreement with us. Um, feel very comfortable with that, uh, where it stands, I know the attorney that they reached out to is, is on top of it. Have, have everything set up for us to, um, before the season begins, actually have an agreement in place. So, feel very comfortable with that, we'll go back, anticipate, uh, next council session, so first one, first one march. Sign that and be done. So, the other thing I would mention, it came up from a resolution twenty-two oh one, uh, obviously, I'm in the background in finance, but I, I would, if, if that is being tabled, if, if there were some verbiage included in there that talks about any draws, or, you know, going to be based on approval by a council measure, or something. If, put that language in, I think you probably, a prospective lender would see that it's not something that's immediately available, would have to be approved, and, and maybe the, uh, prospective punishment for having that, um, open-ended line of credit, that a draw has not been pulled, that might be something they could consider. And I, I think, I think your, your concern is, is well founded, uh, because each lender has a different set of parameters that they look for. Um, and I think if, if the council is going to reconsider that, having some verbiage that says that any, you know, it's, it's set up for emergencies, but the council can seek a draw based on X, Y, Z, I think that may be.
May help, I, we can reach out, we've got, we've got friends in the commercial.
Yeah, see what they'd like, and.
If, somebody that we probably would never use, but they're good for council to ask questions, right? So, if there's no conflict of interest in that, we can say, what do you think about this, and get their opinion, and that's kind of where that came from, and about the conversation the other day, to see what was out there.
Every lender has a different set of parameters, and, but I do think, just from a, you know, from a standpoint, the standpoint from Tom and I, it would be verbiage in the ordinance that provides a council vote, if required. It, I had to say, it couldn't hurt, is what I'm trying to, so. Appreciate the opportunity to make your acquaintance. Oh, and thank you for not being brookside.
Right.
Very, very proud to be an attorney of record for Owens Crossroads, and I'll just, not even as a holiday as Jefferson County, thank you.
All right, we're going to sign the treaty, Dan.
I was leading with, trying to everybody, don't look, in records involved, if you don't.
I, I can speak to that if the mayor would allow. Uh, we, we were there, and Attorney Rich, the, you know, county commissioner, attorney for the county, um, he felt comfortable with the agreement that we had in place. Uh, once he had the opportunity to see that that was, you know, working, we addressed what he had a concern with. Um, the entity that is going to be involved in the agreement from New Hope, uh, is being organized. And so, obviously, our position is, uh, for, for the city, uh, don't enter into an agreement with an entity that's not in existence, because, you know, if something happens, did they have the authority to enter into that agreement? Um, there was, you know, New Hope's X, Y, Z was set up, but they didn't have official recognition by the Department of Treasury as a nonprofit. Uh, that was brought up in the meeting, uh, myself and Tom, you know, we can't put that together, we can't apply for that, uh, treatment, because of big conflict. Same thing with Jeff Rich, you know, the county's attorney can't do that. And so, Mr. Vess, Mr. Vess, very pleasant gentleman, uh, Mr. Vess reached out, uh, previously with an attorney that Tom and I have a great working relationship with. I spoke to him after the meeting, um, and, and they've got the ball rolling on that, so, um, felt it was productive. Um, and I guess the biggest takeaway was the fact that, uh, you know, the, the piece of real property that baseball's going to be played on in New Hope is county property. But the piece of property baseball's going to be played on in Owens Crossroads is Owens Crossroads property. And there's a huge distinction, uh, there, and we needed to make sure that that was, um, realized for any actions undertaken by the city in New Hope. Um, so, that.
It's disagreement between the county and us, and we had to, so we could see what the final.
Yes, before, there, before it's sent to Jeff Rich, the council will get it in advance. It's, um, the big thing was, uh, I mean, there wasn't another party there that was created that can enter into the agreement. I mean, uh, you know, New, New Hope had, had not organized itself, uh, as a nonprofit, so there wasn't an operating agreement. There wasn't, um, artis organization, basically, it was a gentleman who said, we're going to do this, but before we entered into an agreement with him, we needed to make sure we had those documents at hand. Uh, I spoke earlier, uh, with Kristy, uh, the process of recognition as a nonprofit with the Department of Treasury, uh, you know, who knows? But Tom and I would feel comfortable if the artis organization, uh, had been created, signed, a separate bank account has been set up, if, if, if they can show. If, if they can show us, hey, we, we've created this, and we've offered it for the county, and the county has proven it, then we're good with signatures now. Uh, I don't think we need to wait on the Department of Treasury, Department of Treasury to give that designation, so that's why I was talking about Marge.
So, we're, we're talking about a different group of, different group?
No, same folks, just the, the entity itself, that recognizes a nonprofit by the Department of Treasury.
So, it's the same people, just, they just got to get a nonprofit status?
That's, that's it, but perfect, be, be honest with you, we were caught a little bit off guard in, in the, uh, in that meeting, where, uh, you know, I've. Obviously, don't want to speak to, uh, the county attorney's state of mind, but I was not expecting, um, there to be a discussion about how that needed to be organized. I had sort of operated the assumption that it had previously been organized, and so, um, they've got the ball rolling on that. They reached out to Dustin Pissour, I'm sure you guys know, he operates as Minister of Justice in New Hope, um, they reached out to Attorney Pissour, and, and he's got them put in a position to, to have that created in time, uh, for us to get into an agreement. But the assurance we'll give you is that the agreement being considered to be entered into will not be executed before you guys have an opportunity to see it, and, and make any changes or offer any opinions forward.
Alright, thank you, anything else here?
That's it.
Jim?
No.
Scott?
Good.
Larry? Jake?
A couple of things, Shannon, um, do we ever get our numbers set up, do we have anything from nine one one, are we, are we, are we even closer to being able to take calls yet?
Uh, we've got.
I'm pushing on the spot, I haven't talked to you.
We've got a, we've got a yes from the association. Uh, as far as the rest of it, we're in the process.
Okay.
We have her five sixty, whatever.
If she doesn't change it, it's five sixty-three still.
Oh, about sixty-three again? Okay, I'll leave that alone.
That's why it's not on the vehicle yet.
I don't know, change to the free zone, um, and, uh, Jason, um, we'll take our place, Mark's doing an awesome job.
Oh.
Um, I love our town and our place, but I had a little issue this weekend, and, uh, called, the dispatcher came out, our dispatch worked wonderfully, because it wasn't an emergency call. I called the dispatch number, lady called me, had a really bad phone conversation, the lady called me back, and told it was an emergency, um, uh, Jason was the one that was working this weekend. Jason came out, and had a long conversation, considering how, but he took care of what I needed. I tell people that they're advantage, he's living in a small town, and that's one of them, is how easily that was handled, isn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
But what y'all doing?
Thank you.
It's all like that, sir.
Alright, I have a motion.
Motion.
Do that. I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second. Say it, can Mary all in favor? Change off the table.